Welcome, and I'll invite everybody to stand for the National Anthem. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it's located on the lands of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Weyon Dat and Ananashabi nations, including ancestors of Chipewa, the Thames First Nations. It is also the traditional territory of the Hodenoshawney, Atawandarak and Mississauga nations. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. At this time, I'll remind council of disclosures of pecuniary interest. Seeing none, adoption of the previous minutes. Councillor Bachmann, councillor Watson.
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by councillor Bachmann, seconded by councillor Watson, that the minutes for the regular meeting of council dated Monday, October 6, 2025, and the special meeting of council dated Monday, November, whoop, sorry, and the, just the minutes for Monday, October 6. Thank you.
All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, tonight, we have a delegation from Ms. Cheryl Stevenson, who will be providing presentation on the sidewalks. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Cheryl Stevenson. For those of you who don't know me, I live at 120 St. George Street in St. Thomas, Central Elgin, which is across from Cowan Park. In 2024, the County of Elgin, in partnership with the municipality of Central Elgin, reconstructed the St. George Street County Road 26 to an urban road standard from Wellington Road to the CN rail crossing. And the reconstruction included the replacement of aging, whoops, a little fast there, aging storm sewers and road-based reconstruction and complete with sidewalk and curb installation and asphalt placement. This is an excerpt from Peter Duchuk in 2023. "The roadway serves approximately 3,250 vehicles per day, and I must say it's probably increasing. This project will relocate the pedestrian sidewalk away from the traveled roads in order to produce," I thought the timing was slower, sorry. Yeah, sorry, "in order to improve pedestrian safety and comfort. With the construction, pedestrian safety and comfort has been improved if you live on east Cowan Park side of the street, but for the our side of the street, it has not been improved. Pedestrians are at a much greater risk of slipping or tripping, forced to walk in the road space allotted for vehicular traffic, and have no safe crossing. Vehicles are now regularly veering around delivery vans such as postal trucks, pedestrians, cyclists, and those with disabilities. In addition, the new appropriately placed guardrail at the top of the hill acts as a significant visual barrier to see vehicles approaching from the south over the tracks. If you are close to that end and trying to cross the road, it's actually a significant barrier." And the portion I wish to address today is the current, is the portion of the road between the curves on the front of Cowan Park. The houses numbered from 120, which is ours, to 132, which is just before the other corner. Sorry, a little fast there. And this is the most hazardous stretch of St. George Street. You have two curves. Speed limit has been reduced to 30 kilometers an hour. However, I suspect that most of the cars are going probably 40 to 45 kilometers an hour in front of the park. And of course, the rest of the road is still 50, and cars are probably traveling close to 60 on the rest of the road. That's an ongoing issue that has not been resolved. Thank you. These are pre-construction photos. You'll see there was a sidewalk on the east side, and there was a wide, and there was wide level gravel shoulders on both sides of the street prior to construction. There's quite a few historical views on Google Earth going back to 2009, I believe. This is facing north from the CN tracks pre-construction. You can see the sidewalks, everything's level. Our house is on the left there. This is facing south. Cowan Park is on the left. You can see on this side, my side of the road, there was ample space to walk or ride your bike. Completely level crossing, you could basically choose to cross wherever it was safe if you were going for a walk. Riding a bicycle as well, you had space to get off of the road, or push a stroller or a wheelchair as well. And this is facing north, pretty much in front of the park entrance, which is 125. And the following post-construction slides illustrate the narrowness of the road, the lack of accommodation of pedestrians, and visibility concerns. Unless you live directly across from the entrance to Cowan Park, coming and going from the home, our homes, is very, very dangerous. You have to time the cars coming and stepping on and off curves. So this is looking towards the tracks. You can see that the new guardrail, which is where it should be, it will block the view of vehicles. And I almost, I don't know if that's the picture where there's actually a train stop there. And you can actually not see the train through all of that. And a light-colored car would be very difficult to see past the guardrail. This is illustrating of south, facing south from the park, the curbs, they are not accessible for someone with a wheelchair or disability issues. This was last winter. This is, the option to walk is on the road. If you've got a snowbank, you cannot cross to the sidewalk, which is not safe anyway. This is in front of our house with some traffic going both ways. You can see that there is no room for anything but vehicles. It was designed just for vehicles going in both directions. And this is on the other side of the road from our house, illustrating, I think in that one, maybe there's quite a few cars coming around the corner, and of course, a big truck, and then supposedly, it's, this is where I'm supposed to cross or walk down the road facing traffic, facing the traffic as if you were on a country road. The next one is in front, yes, okay, yeah. This is in front of Cowan Park. This is the entrance to Cowan Park. And this is the optimal place to cross the road. It's halfway between the curves. You can get across the road, hopefully, unless someone's traveling at a ridiculously high speed. You can watch for cars and cross relatively safely because it is between the two curves of the road. Either side of that, so that's facing south, and the next one's facing north, there is no place to cross. And if you have, well, for anybody to cross the road, there is no safe place to walk or cross the road. And the closer you are to the corners, it's more, the more dangerous it is because you are trying to negotiate the road, and a car could come flying around the corner pretty quickly. So this is facing north, going towards London. There are some people on the street, including my husband and I, who have some level of disability, and trying to cross the street quickly or trying to negotiate the curbs is not possible. Also, if someone were to have children, they would not be able to do so with a stroller or children with tricycles. The solution is a walkway on the south side of St. George from 120 to 132 inclusive, and a marked crossover, and this is the Ontario government definition of a crossover, is paint and signs in front of the park at 125 St. George Street. I don't know if I mentioned in here that there is concerns on the rest of St. George Street as well, but those people living on the rest of St. George are very welcome to come and advocate for themselves because this has been a year since I've been advocating for myself and my section of the road. And my expectation is that my elected representatives would take responsibility to correct this oversight, which I think it was an oversight in planning, and make the neighborhood more friendly to pedestrians and to the people that live in the neighborhood. And the way it is now is not in line with the provincial vision for accessibility. The vision is to have, this is, this is straight from their, their website, the vision is to have accessibility for all Ontarians. And the accessibility that was there is no longer there. It's completely taken away from us. I have great concerns about coming and going for my walk and just a little trip off that curb, and I would be on the road, and the car could not see me coming around that corner. And the same situation exists for other residents of the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Any questions? No? Councillor Graham.
Just a question for staff through the chair. Is this, or for councillor Connors, is this a consideration coming up in the budget? Are we taking that into consideration? Is there any movement on it at all?
Mr. Brooks.
Staff are working on the 2026 budget, however, have not put this project forward as a consideration.
Councillor Graham.
Is there a reason why we haven't, or have we gone out to investigate the situation? Have staff looked at the accessibility and safety?
It's staff's understanding that the county undertook a, an analysis of the area and determined with the reduction in speed limit from 50, I believe it was 50 to 30 kilometers an hour through the S-bend, that adequate sightlines do exist for pedestrians. And I'm just speaking in generalities, there isn't necessarily requirements for sidewalks on both sides of the road on a collector road such as this one. I would use East Road in Port Stanley as an example, as well as Centennial Ave between Talbot and Elm. So there are other examples of, you know, arterial or collector roads with sidewalks only on one side. So considering that, staff have not considered this project for 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I guess the one good news factor is that through county council, we were aware that the, the goal of, of the reconstruction on St. George Street to reduce the speed has reduced it by a lot. I'm trying to remember the number, but it's not much over 30 kilometers an hour, the speed limit between, the average, the average speed between the top of the hill and the, and this third curve is, is not much over 30, is what we're, the information we were given when they come out and did their traffic study. Sure.
Initially, a few months ago, there was an indicator near Cowan Park to, that people know what speed they were going. Most people were doing in the low 40s past the entrance to the park. That indicator is gone now, and I would dare to say that most people are doing at least 45 going past the park. I do think it's also not very well communicated. There's a sign going up the hill that says 30 kilometers an hour, and then there's another sign past the park entrance that says 30 Ks an hour, but there is nothing at the top of the hill that says 30 Ks. But I don't, I think if a study was done again, you'd find that the traffic speed is not 30 kilometers an hour or anywhere near that.
Okay, thank you. I will see county staff on Wednesday, and I can ask for more guidance on that. So councillor Griffin.
I, I do, I mean, obviously, we've all observed, as Jeff pointed out, that there are many collector roads that are only on the one side. And I think that in cases where you've got enough community members that do have a problem with that, and we have the capacity to add, it's good. But something that came to my attention recently at the Belmont meeting was that we actually have a whole school going in and a community that's very alarmed because right now they don't have any sidewalks at all in a place where their kids are going to be walking to the school. So seeing as this is a fairly recent change in speed, I can't help thinking right now, it might be worth checking again with the county and seeing if we do see any change in speed as a result of that, and focusing our energy on the places where we don't have a sidewalk and we do have kids that are going to need it.
Thank you. I'll just speak to one thing. I believe we have a study that's coming up for trails. And am I right, Mr. Brooks? There's a, oh, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
No, we're through you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, the Parks, our Community Services Master Plan will touch base on trails, secondary trails as well. So we will aim to look to have that looked at as we go into the different hamlets and communities.
Okay. Will that address some of the concerns with sidewalks, say, this one that we're talking about, and then the others with the school in Belmont?
Through the chair, no, it wouldn't get that specific. That'd be a much larger scope. That would be more of an active transportation plan that would have to be undertaken.
Okay. We can talk about that in the future. Councillor Graham.
Can staff give us, through the chair, Mr. Brooks, can you give us like a ballpark figure of what it would cost for the sidewalk from whatever, 120 to 32?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, I'd have to take a look at the, at the total length of what's required there. So I, to throw out a number, I just wouldn't be giving you good information right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Stevenson. Correspondence requiring action, special events application, Harbour Holidays. Mover and seconder for that? Councillor Bachmann, councillor Griffin?
Deputy Mayor.
Questions or comments? Sorry.
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by councillor Bachmann, seconded by councillor Griffin, that the special events permit be approved for the Harbour Holiday Days event to be held in Port Stanley on Friday, November 28 to Sunday, November 30, 2025, subject, subject to the conditions as outlined.
Okay. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Councillor Graham.
Through the chair, I was contacted by the World Animal Protection out of Toronto, and they had some questions that they wanted me to address with the Special Events Committee. So they wanted to know if the committee and the BIA had reviewed the provincial recommendations on petting zoo for disease, injury prevention, public safety, and if there were any non-native wild animals that were coming to the petting zoo.
Ms. Leach.
Deputy Mayor Noble, through you to councillor Graham. I would be happy to make connection between the BIA and yourself to get that clarified, as the BIA is hosting the event and procuring these services. But from my understanding, the petting zoo that has been confirmed at this time includes farm animals. It's all just primarily farm animals.
Councillor Graham.
Follow up, and through the chairs, was there any safety discussions? Did they bring any forward, those things that they're looking at? The provincial recommendations for injury prevention, public safety, did the BIA look at that?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Noble, to councillor Graham. That would have to be addressed by the host of the event, the Port Stanley BIA.
The only thing I can speak to is the, the folks that are doing that part. They come with the appropriate insurance. So I'm guessing if they are able to get insurance for doing that event, that kind of thing, then they would have the proper procedures in place for the other. I don't know if that answers your question perfectly, but in the world of insurance, typically, they don't insure things that are not safe. Any further questions? No? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And next, special events application, Dickens Day Parade. Mover and seconder? Councillor Griffin, councillor Watson?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by councillor Griffin, seconded by councillor Watson, that the special events permit be approved for the annual Dickens Day Night Parade to be held in Port Stanley on November 28, 2025, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, subject to the conditions as outlined.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. On to Director of Planning and Engineering Services, DPE 0725, application for zoning bylaw amendment, Borden Avenue, Village of Belmont. And who's speaking to this? Okay, mover and seconder, sorry. Councillor Watson, councillor Bachmann.
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Bachmann, that the zoning bylaw amendment, application B2125, be approved to rezone the subject lands to a site-specific H1, H2, MC-1, adding a contractor's yard as permitted use in the subject zone.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, application zoning bylaw amendment, DPE 0825, Ferguson Line. Mover and seconder? Councillor Watson, councillor Connors?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Connors, that the zoning bylaw amendment B2225 be approved to rezone the subject lands as a combination of site-specific open space one zone to recognize the new rural residential lot at 43847 Ferguson Line, and to rezone the remaining lands to prohibit the establishment of residential uses on the subject lands.
Questions or comments? I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. DPE 0925, application for zoning bylaw amendment 8982 Yarmouth Centre Road. Mover and seconder? Councillor Watson, councillor Bachmann?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Bachmann, that the zoning bylaw amendment B2525 to rezone the subject lands to facilitate the consent E1825 to prohibit residential uses on the retained lands be approved.
Questions or comments? Just a reminder, we do have Paul Hicks here to answer any questions if we do. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, DPE 1025, application for consent, 42400, 42420, John Wise Line. Mover and seconder? Councillor Griffin, councillor Connors?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by councillor Griffin, seconded by councillor Connors, that the applications for consent E6525 and E6625 be supported, subject to the condition outlined in Appendix 1 of Report DPE 1025, and that staff be directed to forward a copy of the council resolution to the Elgin County Land Division Committee for consideration.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Mr. Hicks, speak. Through you, Chair. Could we have Mr. Hicks speak to this a little bit?
Sure. Did you have a question about it?
Just what's going on. It's just a application for consent.
Mr. Hicks, can you talk about this event, or this application, sorry?
I'd be happy to. So this is an application for, to create two additional lots that have an existing lot that contains two, two dwellings on it. So effectively, we're going to sever off and create three lots in total, two of which will have existing dwellings on them. One will be a vacant residential lot. And those lots will be serviced by individual onsite wells and septic, as there is, it would require extension of the water and sanitary sewer lines to, to, to provide full municipal services to them. And that policy allows us to do this kind of minor rounding out and infilling on private services where appropriate. So in this case, we're looking at a one lot that, that currently contains two existing dwellings, and the applicant has applied to create three lots, each containing a single detached dwelling, and then a third that will be a vacant lot.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Any further questions? I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. And DPE 1125, application for consent, 223 Prospect Street, Port Stanley. And mover and seconder? Councillor Griffin, councillor Bachmann?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by councillor Griffin, seconded by councillor Bachmann, that the application for consent E7025 be supported, subject to the conditions outlined in Report CPE 3923, and that staff be directed to forward a copy of the council resolution to the County, Elgin County Land Division Committee for consideration.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Paid parking program summary. Mover and seconder? Councillor Connors, councillor Griffin?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by councillor Connors, seconded by councillor Griffin, that staff be directed to undertake an analysis of paid parking rates and rate structures in comparable municipalities and report back to council with the findings, and that staff be directed to initiate a pilot program to address parking machine glare concerns with a proposed budget of $20,000 to be funded from the 2026 paid parking operating budget.
Thank you. That was a very comprehensive report. I appreciate it. Any questions or comments? Councillor Graham.
Through the chair, I'd just like to know the net. We have the total revenue, but then staff is saying that that doesn't account for deductions. So do we have a net number there?
Mr. Brooks.
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, we don't have a net number at this point in time. As we work through all of the actuals towards year end, we'll have a net number. So we'll take the total revenue that's generated minus our expenses in the past. We're typically around a half million dollar transfer to reserve that we've made net of all of our expenses. I would expect this year we'll have a little bit more because we've received some, some additional money from the county on this one. So, so anyway.
Supplementary, councillor Graham?
And when we're looking at tiered parking, from my recollection of the parking study that was done when we first came into office, it was, every parking lot was at max almost, except for the East Harbour. So are we thinking that people will park at the East Harbour with a tiered parking system or payment system and be traveling over to Main Beach from there? Because that's the only one that's underutilized, is the East Harbour.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I don't believe that staff have a specific goal in mind at this point in time with the paid parking. However, when we did, had a look at other municipalities similar to Central Elgin, we did see that there were tiered parking in, in, you know, higher demand areas. So, you know, while certain long weekends will have parking lots fill right up to the maximum, that's not every weekend. So, you know, some of those other weekends, a tiered parking system might help to relieve some of the of those other weekends, a tiered parking system might help to relieve some of the demand at, let's say, the Main Beach parking lot or the ballpark parking lot. So at this point in time, we just, staff feel that the parking rates haven't been reviewed in five years, and we're just determining whether or not council has an appetite to take a look at the parking rates.
Thank you. Mayor Sloan?
Thank you, through the Deputy Mayor. I thank you to Mr. Brooks and the Mr. Mayers and the team there for bringing this forward, because one of the things that I appreciate them doing is trying to make things even better. The report tonight is asking for them to come back and give us opportunities to give us ideas. And for that, they have my wholehearted support. Earlier in the summer, at the end of August, the Miss Heard put together a stakeholder engagement at Port Stanley, and the Deputy Mayor and I were able to meet with stakeholders at the big beach. And those machines that are there right now are limited, and to say limited is somewhat of an underestimate of their effectiveness. We have reserves in the parking budget. I would suggest that when we get the report back, that we get an opportunity to see how those machines can be replaced, or if they need to be replaced. But the consternation from the people that we saw that day, in talking to stakeholders and watching people, trying to pay for parking, was something that I don't think that more corporation should be continuing in the year 2026. Quality is remembered long after price is forgotten, as the adage goes. And I don't think people have an issue with paying for parking and spending a nice day at the beach. I do think they have an issue when it comes to not being able to see the screen. So my thanks to staff for giving council the opportunity to see what the options are, and I look forward to seeing the report when it comes back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Graham, you had a question?
Through the Chair, to Mr. Brooks again. Mr. Brooks, do we not have, when we're looking at building the canopies, do we not have the skill set from our own workers to build a canopy over those machines?
Mr. Brooks?
I believe we'll be able to utilize staff for some aspects of the build of the canopy over top of the screens. However, we need to relocate the solar panels on the top of the screen to the top of the new canopy. So we may need an electrician to come in and assist with the construction of that.
I think fixing that glare would be greatly appreciated by everybody. We've seen some of the frustration that folks have when they're trying to use that equipment down there. Counselor Graham, you had another question?
And just one suggestion that I've had was when we're doing that, if we could consider putting green light signs in the parking areas, so that all the visitors realize that they have to move over or pull off the road when our fire people are going up to the hall. Because for the primary part of the summertime, when a lot of our fire trucks are trying to get through town, we have a lot of tourists that don't realize that they're supposed to be pulling over. So if that could be a consideration, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Further questions? I'm excited to see the report come back to us. I think it's important to always be looking to improve for the community. I guess we're at the point, we'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. And speeding on McBane, mover and secander? Counselor Connors, Counselor Griffin?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that a phased approach be used to approach, to address concerns of speeding on McBane Line by installing pavement markings to delineate two three-meter-wide lanes, a 2.5-meter parking lane on the south side with a 1.5-meter bike lane. That staff be directed to install pavement markings in the spring of 2026, when weather conditions allow for a consistent temperature of 10 degrees Celsius or above, and that when installed, staff monitor the effectiveness of the pavement markings for a two-month period using traffic counters to collect the necessary data.
Thank you. I look forward to the concept of the pavement markers. It's similar to what we did on St. George, where they narrowed the road. The idea of the pavement markers is to narrow that road. Counselor Connors, you had your hand up.
Through you Deputy Mayor, there is an amendment to that motion.
Okay. Do you have a secander? I guess we should read the amendment, and then see if you have a secander.
Deputy Mayor Noble, through to council, the proposed amendment would be that the following paragraph be added, that staff be directed to include two, to include level two traffic calming measures by way of speed cushions along McBane Line in the 2026 budget to an upset limit of $24,000.
Your secander? Counselor Watson? And discussion. Counselor Griffin?
Thank you, yeah. Is there a reason that you feel that that would be better than what staff are recommending?
Counselor Connors?
Through you, Chair. Yes, I do. The complaints on McBane Line have been there for at least three years. We continually hear about them at our town halls that we've had every year. I had discussions with staff. We are going to try and put the lines up this fall, and we ran out of time. I don't believe the level one traffic calming measures are going to work here. I believe we need speed bumps. And whether it's two, three, or four, people need to be deterred from speeding down McBane. McBane is only going to get longer, because it's going to connect with the new subdivision. In some of the, they were clocking people going down McBane. We move the apparatus to different locations, and in this data that we have here, there's four or five cars that were clocked at 90 kilometers an hour in a 40 kilometer hour zone. So, you know, I constantly hear about this. I don't believe, like I said, I don't believe the lines are going to work here. I believe we need to take more evasive, more evasive standpoint and put in the speed bumps.
I just have one question for Mr. Brooks. Is there a negative effect of the speed bumps?
Maybe I would defer to Mr. Mayers, through his report, but happy to comment.
Mr. Mayers?
Through the Chair. You know, certainly it doesn't, as it doesn't fall under the, oh, sorry. I'm lit up here, so. Although it doesn't fall under that, that traffic calming measures, you know, suggesting to stick with the level one, you know, certainly doesn't, you know, it's certainly possible, we can certainly do that if Counselor Connors wishes. But it's not what we're recommending. We'd like to try the traffic painting first.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayers. Mayor Sloan?
Thank you, through the Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to highlight the fact, and I guess ask the question, that if staff recommendation, we haven't had anything to date. And if the staff are recommending that we go with this phased approach, I guess the question would come through either through the Mayor to Counselor Connors, is would it not be prudent for us to see what the initial actions that are recommended by staff, what the outcome is of those before we proceed to the second step? Thank you.
Counselor Griffin, sorry. Endless. Yeah. Oh.
Sorry, it seems like a bit of overkill. So if we're going to move forward with the amendment for the speed humps or speed cushions, it would seem that we wouldn't need all the lines. So if we're moving in that direction, it would seem that we don't need both either way. And I'm supportive of the speed cushions completely, because I know that the lines and the delineators and all those things haven't worked in Port Stanley. So chances are, they're probably not going to work anywhere else, including McBane. So I think it's time that we did start implementing some speed cushion.
Counselor Griffin?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. To Mr. Mayers, I feel like you answered admirably for me, whether you're capable of doing the speed bumps. But what I'm trying to understand about this amendment is, obviously, staff didn't initially recommend them. Are there any disadvantages to them? There's obviously the increased cost, but are there any additional maintenance considerations? What were the ultimate reasons we didn't suggest that in the first place?
Through the Chair. So a couple issues. One, snow removal, just obviously they create, you know, an issue on the roadway for that, along with fire vehicles, emergency and fire services. You know, I think our approach with this is to do the painting markings first, and collect the necessary data, and I think we'd make a more informed decision. But again, you know, happy to go in the direction of council.
I just have one question, Mr. Mayers. If we do the painting on the road, how long, what would the, how long would it be to get the report back if the next level would need to be done? Like if we just stayed with the original?
Through the Chair. So we're recommending a two-month data collection. We can certainly shorten that. We could do a one-month period, but I think it would be a fairly quick turnaround. We can pull this data relatively quickly and get it on the council agenda for future discussion.
Okay. And in that report, we're doing parking on one side and a bike lane on the other side, too. So there's a couple of things that are happening there, right? I'm going to go to Counselor Connors next. You had your hand up.
So thank you, through you, Chair. In addition to the speeding on McBane, there was a number of other things discussed at the town halls. Parking, because the parking is somewhat random on McBane, and people park on both sides. We discuss stop signs. There's sections of that road that if vehicles are parked in a certain direction, you can't see to make a left-hand turn coming out of one of the side streets. So we talked about, you know, parking on one side of the road only. We talked about more stop signs to break it up. They've addressed, staff has addressed that in the, in the report. You know, I mean, I don't want to see this drag on through the summer next year. I want to make sure that we rectify this. So if we need to carry the money for the speed bumps, and we need to carry the money for the lines in our budget, there shouldn't be a long transition between the two. If we try the lines for 30 days, as Mr. Mayers suggested, and we find that it's not satisfactory, I don't want to wait another six months to put the speed bumps in. I want to get them in right away. So I don't know if that can be addressed through staff in this meeting or not. But I'm willing to work with staff and work with the recommendation, but I don't want it to drag on through the summer.
Thank you, Counselor Connors. Just one thought on this is, there's a lot of data here, which is, which is always great, to have that information. And with both of these, the speed humps or speed bumps, and the painting, and the changes, none of that's going to happen basically till we have some warm weather again, because this is Canada. I'm just curious if that data was shared with the OPP, because it kind of gives you the days and the times of some of the major speeding. If we could, with sharing that with OPP, if we could get that to actually solve some of our problem through the, through the next few months, as we're into some of the, well, obviously, we can't do this in the wintertime. But I'm just wondering if that, that would, that would be a good thing for McBane, too, Counselor Connors? I don't know who's next, I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Mayers?
Through you, Chair. The, so the data, just talking with Alex here, the data is shared with the OPP, and then they, based on that data that comes forward to them, will base their decision on their enforcement level.
Okay. Maybe I can ask the Mayor if he can have a conversation with OPP at the next board meeting to help us out here with that data, if they've already gotten it. And Counselor Graham?
Through the Chair, to Mr. Mayers. So when you say that it's, you know, the speed humps are concerning when it comes to snow removal, is it any different than all the permanent speed humps they have in St. Thomas, London, Guelph? Because those seem to be working without any difficulties to clear the snow on those roads.
Yep, through the Chair. You know, certainly, it certainly doesn't impede them entirely. But it's just something to note, that it was, that in my past, that experience in my past municipality, that has been a concern that's been raised, as is the emergency services vehicles as well.
Thank you. Counselor Griffin?
Thank you, through you. I did attend to that town hall meeting, because I think it's always a great opportunity to hear what the concerns are in other wards. And I wasn't surprised to see that staff brought up here that stop signs don't work, because the Ontario Traffic Manual does say that actually, they increase danger and they can make things worse. So I think it's important for us to understand that a town hall brings up concerns of the community, and those concerns are real and valid. But that doesn't mean that the first knee-jerk reaction of the community about how to fix it is the safest one. There is evidence, and there is a way of approaching things that's been studied and proven to improve the situation. So when we have all of this data, and we have recommendations about taking a few steps to try and improve this, I would much rather see us follow the staff recommendation and the data than say, well, I just don't feel that it's going to be useful, so let's just jump steps forward. I would rather see us measure and look for the right approach.
Counselor Connors?
Through you, Chair. I don't have a problem with that approach, as I said, as long as it's, as long as it's timely and we deal with it immediately. I don't want to, let's just put some dates down. We don't want to put lines up in April and then wait to July to assess them. I want them done within 30 days, or I'd like them done within 30 days. And then we can assess whether we need the speed bumps or whether we don't. And in regards to Counselor Graham's point about the snow removal, you know, I, at one point, lived in Middlesex as well, and they get a lot of snow. And down here, we don't seem to get so much snow. A big fall down here would be somewhere between eight and 10 inches at one time. And usually, it's gone within a couple of days. So what the plow doesn't get will melt away. I don't see that as a big, as a big issue here.
So just for a kind of collective, if the painting happens and we get the numbers or the data within 30 days, and then make a decision if something maybe further needs to happen, if we tighten that up to 30 days instead of 60, would that be, would that work better for you, Counselor Connors?
Through you, Chair, yes, it would. And also indicate in there that we will rectify this. If there is, if it is identified that we do need speed bumps, that it gets rectified within 30 days from there.
Okay. So we will deal with the amendment on the floor, and then deal with maybe doing an amendment for the original motion? Does that make sense? All right. Everybody's comfortable calling the vote on the amendment? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is defeated. Okay. I'll look to Ms. Leach to do an amendment on the original motion. It's always fun to have healthy debate. Appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor Noble, through you to council, the amendment number two would read that paragraph number three be amended to read pavement markings for a 30-day period using traffic counters to collect the necessary data.
Okay. And I trust the mover and secander are in agreement of that? Oh, okay. So mover and secander for the new amendment. Counselor Connors? Counselor Griffin? And probably don't need to discuss this, we can just go to the vote. Call the vote, all in favor? Motion carries. And then, now we're back to the main motion. Mayor Sloan, did you have your hand up for a question? No? Okay. I'll call the vote on the main motion. All in favor? Sure.
Deputy Mayor Noble, through you to council, the motion as amended would be that a phased approach be used to address concerns of speeding on McBane Line by installing pavement markings to delineate two three-meter-wide lanes, a 2.5-meter parking lane on the south side with a 1.5-meter bike lane. That staff be directed to install pavement markings in the in the spring of 2026 when weather conditions allow for a consistent temperature of 10 degrees Celsius or above, and that when installed, staff monitor the effectiveness of the pavement markings for a 30-day period using traffic counters to collect the necessary data.
Okay. Everybody's comfortable? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. On to waste collection vehicle rental. Mover and seconder? Mayor Sloan? Counselor Griffin?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Mayor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that the mayor and deputy clerk be authorized to sign a two-year lease agreement with Amtrak Limited for the lease of a refuse Packer truck.
Questions or comments? Counselor Graham?
Through the chair. To staff, so is this a standby vehicle, or it's going to be in the rotation with the other two vehicles? And I have a couple of questions once that's answered.
Through the chair. This will be likely the prime vehicle that will be out, and seeing as it is a rental, we'll be able to make use. The other two will be cycled in, and when one is down in the shop and getting repaired, we'll always have the two vehicles out on the road to provide the level of service needed.
Supplementary, Counselor Graham?
So when we're talking about --
Oh, microphone. Sorry.
Talking about $34,477 as annual costs for the older vehicles or the 2019 vehicles, are those parts and labor, or is that just parts? Just because we've had this discussion before, where because we have three mechanics on duty, it's not additional cost for them to be paid in their salary to fix the vehicles. So I just wanted to clarify, is it just $34,000 and $34.4 in parts themselves?
Through the chair, it's just parts.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Contract award, Port Stanley pressure zone delineation. Mover and seconder? Mayor Sloan? Counselor Griffin?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Mayor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that the tender submission from Omega Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $775,073.66 plus HST be accepted, and that the mayor and deputy clerk be authorized to sign an agreement between the municipality and Omega Contractors, Inc. that includes the installation of two pressure-reducing valves with chambers and associated controls.
Questions or comments? Okay. I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Speed reduction on Water Tower Line. Mover and seconder? Counselor Connors? Counselor Griffin?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that a bylaw be considered to establish the following speed limits on Water Tower Line: a 50-kilometer-per-hour speed limit for the majority of Water Tower Line, and a 40-kilometer-per-hour speed limit specifically for the section of Water Tower Line from Turner Road to 1.500 meters west of Turner Road.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Appointment of North Shore Resilience Working Group. Mover and seconder? Counselor Griffin? Counselor Bachman?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that Scott Mayers, Director of Public Works and Community Services, be appointed as the municipality of Central Algen's representative on the North Shore Resilience Working Group.
Questions or comments? Counselor Griffin?
Just that I believe that both of our conservation areas have people involved with the working group, and I'm really pleased for us to get the municipality on board as well.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Are we doing the bylaws collectively? Yeah, okay. Mover and seconder that we take bylaws 25-050, 051, and 052 collectively? Mover and seconder? Oh, to be read a first time and passed. Counselor Watson? Counselor Bachman?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that bylaws number 2025-50, 2025-51, and 2025-52 be read a first time and passed.
All in favor? Motion carries. And notices of motion, YMCA pilot project. Mayor Sloan, you wish to speak to this? Oh, okay. Can I get a mover and seconder? I'm guessing the mayor's going to move it, seconder?
I'll move it.
Counselor Connors?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Mayor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Connors, whereas promoting health, physical fitness, and community engagement is a priority for the municipality of Central Algen, now therefore be it resolved that the Director of Public Works and Community Services be directed to collaborate with the YMCA of Southwestern Ontario to develop a pilot project offering reduced rates to Central Algen residents for swimming and water-based programs at the YMCA pool in St. Thomas beginning in January 2026 for a period of 12 months for council consideration.
Questions, comments? Counselor Graham?
Through the chair. To staff?
Sorry, I probably should let Mayor Sloan speak to it. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. Through you, deputy mayor. This was initiative that came from constituents. And I think one of the important things about it is that it applies equality to anyone in Central Algen. Also, there's a line about stealing a good idea from someone is just as good as coming up with it on your own. St. Thomas did this last year, and we have another lower tier that's planning on doing the same. And that is engaging with the YMCA to offer subsidized use of the facility. Bringing the notion, motion tonight was so that this could possibly start as early as January 1st. The discussion would be that there would be a pilot project, so we would see what would happen. In conversations with the groups and with staff, they usually run them from January through to about May, and sometimes they run them in the fall, from September, October, through December, when the weather isn't as good and people need to want to use swimming as a form of exercise. It adds to the services that we offer as a municipality in what I believe is a cost-effective manner. I don't want to get into the mental or physical benefits of a low-impact workout, although I could probably use it. Our winters can be long, and we got a taste of that this morning. And I'm looking to see, you know, from staff on how this could be implemented, and then after that, to see how it's received by our constituents. So I thank my colleagues for their consideration of this, and hope that there's any ideas or other opportunities like this one that we can pursue here at the council board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. Questions? Counselor Graham?
Through the chair. To staff. So will you, if this passes, will you be coming back with the cost and details on if it will be related, like, to usage, like, cost based on usage, things like that?
Mr. Mayers?
Through the chair. So there is, I spoke with the YMCA regarding this, so I have a little more detail on this. There would be an agreement coming back to council, either at the next meeting or the meeting in December, for consideration, based on a $15,000 contribution or budget set aside for this, whereby a Central Algen resident would pay $5 for a $15 drop-in pass, so they get a significant discount. The $10 is then invoiced back to the municipality on a monthly basis. So we'll be able to get those usage reports and data from the Y on a monthly basis. Thank you. Mayor Sloan, you had your hand up? No? Okay.
Just to say through the chair that we'd essentially be looking at the opportunities that St. Thomas offered, and as I say, there's another lower tier. So the opportunity would be to see, the subsidy would come back to council. We'd have a certain amount of money up to a maximum in an account or in a portion to this. And then we'd see who uses it, and be able to look at it from there, and see if it was a success, and see if residents liked it. So it would be a pilot, but I think for the most part, council might agree that it's something that could be used from all our residents, and we could work it into our process. Thank you.
Just to speak to this, too, I think we, what was that, not subsidy is not my word, the program that we had where council picked and chose where money could be given, there wasn't a lot of money used in that. Was there, Mr. Janssen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe you're referring to the community grants. It was about 50% utilized.
Okay. So there, it's a good possibility to use some of that money maybe for that. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. And next, we have Great Lakes Coastal Cleanup. Counselor Griffin? Mover and seconder? Counselor Graham seconds.
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Graham, whereas the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative coordinates an annual Great Lakes coastal cleanup on World River State each September, and is seeking additional municipal participants. Therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to engage with the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative to participate in the annual coastal cleanup event, and that staff be directed to reach out to local environmental organizations to explore potential partnerships and community engagement opportunities in support of this initiative, and that this resolution be circulated to Lake Erie-adjacent municipalities in Elgin County for their information and potential participation.
Counselor Griffin?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the October Meeting of Conservation Ontario, Philippe from the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative came and spoke to us about their coastal cleanup. And I felt like it was a perfect fit for Port Stanley. It would mean, well, there are many organizations that do a cleanup in the spring for Earth Day, but I couldn't help thinking that having something at the end of September, once the tourists have more or less gone and before the snow comes, is a nice sort of combination effort there. And I know that for Blue Flag Beaches, we're meant to have a certain amount of education and community engagement activity. So this seemed like a great opportunity, being that it's all the way at the end of September. It's also at a nice time where if the eco class would like to get involved or things, there's time for their teacher to have that conversation with parents and families and things. So it seems like a great way to have our community working together. And because we are part of a county that completely runs along the border of the lake, it is also a great opportunity for us to invite our neighbors to participate.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I just have one. The initiative to participate in the annual coastal cleanup, what exactly would the staff be engaging in on that one? Just for clarification, I think we established some of that, but...
Through the chair. I was able to speak with Counselor Griffin last week to understand the initiative a little better. From a staff perspective, there'll be some coordination through our communications, helping to advertise and promote the event. Obviously, somebody like myself would be engaged with collaborating with some of the volunteer groups to get an understanding from that. And I think when it gets to boots on the ground, there, you know, the idea of having a pickup-and-drop-off location close by that, you know, our staff would be able to go down and pick up those, the garbage that's been collected and dispose of it properly. So there's some logistics involved with our team, but certainly something that we can support.
Thank you. And I know in the spring, we did have a group that did that also down in Port Stanley, which was great. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Mover and seconder to move into closed. Counselor Connors? Counselor Bachman?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that council proceed into closed session at 8:04 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to litigation or potential litigation affecting the municipality, and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
Call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries.